I'd like to call to order the June 19th, 2018, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please also silence your electronic devices at this time.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance?
Okay, so you have two off-agenda items and consent matters, one through 73, for consideration. I do need a motion to determine the necessity to hear items off Agenda 1 and 2. Both are communication received and filed items reporting the following. Supervisor Donna Natoli traveled to Austin, Texas on June 13th, 2018, related to county business. And Supervisor Patrick Kennedy traveled to Washington, DC from June 10th to June 13th, related to county business as a delegate of the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency.
I got a motion. Did I hear a second? Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, does anyone wish to?
I do have further notes.
Oh, okay.
For your consent matters, one through 73, I do need to hold item number six. This is the three-year labor agreements with 11 bargaining units. And then I do need a motion to drop item number 19. It's the Sacramento International Airport Economy Lots 42 and 43 Improvement bids to be received on July 26th, 2018.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then item 54, I need a motion to drop. It's the proposed Watt and El Camino Property and Business Improvement District.
So move. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Now, Mr. Natoli, anything?
Yes, I do, ma'am. Just a couple of items, if I could. Item 37 and item 50, you want to call 37?
Item 37?
Need clarification, yes.
All right. Item 37, authority to enter into an agreement with South County Services Incorporated in the amount of $162,520 to provide safety net services in the most southern portion of Sacramento County for the term of July 1 through June 30th.
Okay. Just a clarification on this. Over the past two and a half years, we've gone out to request a proposal three times. And my understanding was that this was going to, if awarded, was going to be a three-year term. My understanding from the information provided, although it wasn't clear in the staff report, it was in the resolution, that this was going to be a one-year with potential for two-year renewals. And I think we sufficiently have scoured the marketplace for these services that are safety net services to folks. So I just wanted to ask the county executive, I've talked to them about this. It's our intent to, assuming contract obligations are met, to have a three-year contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need for that item. And then item 50.
Item 50.
Item 50, approve agreement to provide animal care and regulation services to the city of Galt.
Yes. The question I have here was that in briefing yesterday that we're negotiating to continue providing services to the city of Galt, we have an arrangement where basically their folks, by virtue of what's reported here in the report, the Galt Police Department does a good deal of the field services there, not entirely, but they have some holding facilities for both dogs and cats and do their best to try to connect owners with stray animals and reunite them before they come into the county system. In this contract, though, it's not included, and I know that a couple of years ago, we had at least one community event, maybe two, where the availability of the Batmobile, the Spaineuter mobile van, and some of the educational, as well as other material, as well as adoptive pets, are made available in a community setting. There's no provision for that. My understanding was we charge extra. I think that's a service that, bless you, a service that we ought to at least provide maybe one or two opportunities under the contract annually, whether they take advantage of that or not. I haven't talked with the city manager nor the police chief, but it seems to make good sense, something that we do with our unincorporated communities, and I think it'll be built in here at no charge. And so that was my proposal, is that we make sure we make it available to them in the event that they request it, you know, maybe on two, up to two occasions a year for services.
If the board would delegate that to my position, I can then talk to the city manager, have Dave Dickinson reach out and amend the contract for at least two visits.
Up to two.
Up to two community events.
That's fine with me.
Okay, all right, good. That would be in direction. That's all I, thanks.
Ask the clerk if she got that.
I have, I'm sorry.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Frost? Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a question and comment on item 52.
Item 52 is the mail jail replace, excuse me, main jail replace roofing system, final contract acceptance.
Thank you. So this is, seems to be an ongoing frustrating project. This is not an incidental change order, in my estimate, when you see something in excess of $700,000 for what should be a somewhat uneventful replacement of one of the systems affecting our main jail. And I know there's a detailed justification memo that comes with the board letter. In that justification, it states that the slope of the roof, I believe, is what has adversely affected the ability to replace the roof membrane at much less cost. So my question is, what got missed here in terms of, you know, looking at as-built, once the jail was completed? How did this surprise us to the tune of, what is it, in excess, like I said, in excess of $700,000? It seems to me that, as a matter of routine practice, we document, file our as-built on anything we do. So I want to know what was missed.
Good morning. I'm Mike Morse, Department of General Services, and on behalf of the Architectural Services Division, I don't know, I can give you a fully technical response, but I asked that same question. It was not fully clear in the as-built of what that slope was, or maybe better said, what was shown on the as-built was not what we found when we opened up the roof. So in trying to determine, and the number of different options of the type of roofing that we wanted to put on there, and we opted for the SBS option that was going to save us some money in the long run, and once we opened up the roof and discovered that the slope was not what we expected, that option was no longer available to us, and we had to reassess.
So my understanding is that the slope of the roof is, it's a warranty question?
Yes.
Okay, so we knew that, I assume we knew that, when the, when the original roof was completed, that the slope is going to be a very important factor in making sure that the warranty stays intact?
I would have assumed so.
Let me rephrase it. Does, is there anyone in your office that, as a matter of practice, looks at any, any time we have a warranted element of construction, what the critical components of construction are that affect either warranty being intact or not?
And all of those factors are considered when they're determined, when they're trying to determine what the best application will be. And with the, with what they knew of the systems that were in place, and looking at the different options, that's how they came to the decision of the SBS system that they originally put in the specification. Again, once they opened up that roof and started to examine it, it was not as they expected it to be.
I understand, I understand all that, but that doesn't really make me feel any better in terms of it was missed. That's a fact. Something was missed. And we're talking about almost 30% change order. You know, we see somewhat routine basis change orders in the range of 5%, 10%, sometimes 15%, but when we start getting into 30% change order amounts, alarm bells go off for me. So I'm, I'm not happy about this. And if there is something that we can quite honestly look back and learn from this lesson that needs to change in terms of our protocols and how we document very clearly what is warranted and what is not, and what are the triggers that keep warranties intact, maybe it's time that we take inventory of that and maybe do a better job of it.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, could I just comment on that?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the things, too, is that hopefully we might have to redo this work for another 30 years, but I would just say that then somebody ought to make good record of what we know now is in place as-built. And, you know, whether those records are retained for the purposes of somebody who would have to do this, you know, two or three decades from now, I don't know. But I think that's important, because again, the lesson learned here obviously was an expensive one and need to be done right. But I guess I would suggest that wherever that repository is for that information, that now there's clear understanding about that roof, how it was constructed, deconstructed, and reconstructed. And so I guess I would just suggest, Mike, that wherever those information is, there ought to be a big asterisk somewhere so somebody can pull it up, you know, the next generation of architects and re-roofers will have that available information to them, so.
Most assuredly, yeah. We always try to make sure our as-bills are updated when we go do these projects, so, and 30 years, Mr. Penrose can talk to that if that comes up.
Right, okay.
For 30?
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Madam Clerk, I'd like the record to reflect, I'm recusing myself on item 35 due to a business conflict. And I'd also like to point out, item 47 is a P-Bid item for 80 watt, and they are funding a license plate reader to address crime in that area, and they're loaning it to the Sheriff's Department. So I, the P-Bid has already helped drop crimes significantly in that area, and I think this will help not only the P-Bid area, but the entirety of North Highlands. Thank you. So we need a motion. Anyone like a second? Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that this is with the exception of item 6.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I had, Karen Klinger wants to comment, item 58.
Oh, okay.
I don't see her here. There she is. You're not in your usual red, Ms. Klinger. I had trouble finding you.
And is 58 the?
CSA.
Oh, CSA.
Item 58, receive and file engineers and written reports for fiscal year 2018-19, designating July 17th for a public hearing and direct staff to provide notice for county service area 1.
I just wanted to check to make sure that the rate for 2018-2019 remains the same that it was for 2017-18. Just because it's shown here, I just wanted to confirm that amount, because that goes on all of our property tax bills. And if you drop one line below, from 256, you go down to $17. I just wanted to make sure that.
It's the same rate as 1996, Karen. It hasn't changed in all those years.
Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Okay, and you're staying for 82, so I understand, you mark 82, which is a hearing item.
It is a hearing item.
This afternoon.
Do you want me to wait for that?
It's not on consent.
I know it isn't. Thank you.
Just checking to make sure you understood that. Thank you. Okay, then I have one off-agenda speaker, Steve Barnett. Before you start, I read your comments. I'd like to point out that this is part of the family law courts, and we can't comment on it, it's in their purview.
Nope, I was not expecting any comment. I, more than anything else, was just letting the board know about an issue that's really affecting many citizens in.
We have a three-minute limit.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Peters, Vice Chair Kennedy, and supervisors. I would like to speak about an issue that I believe in the background you may have looked at a little bit. I'm sure you're familiar with the case of Callie Anderson, who was found in a Sacramento storage locker last month. She was found dead. And that came about partially because the Solano County Superior Court awarded sole custody to her father despite his crack cocaine addiction. Sadly, the Family Law Division of Sacramento Superior Court often does the same thing, where it puts our children into the arms of abusive parents much too often. This court is rife with mediators who are often biased to one side, and special masters who start with a bias in favor of recommending treatments that they are then paid to offer to the people in the case. When you get a smog check on your car, we have something in place in the state where the garage doing the testing is not allowed to then affect the repairs. But apparently this conflict of interest doesn't hold in assessing and helping our children in the court system. The conflict of interest is rabid in the Superior Court system, so. This is all overseen by judges that are admittedly overworked, but they also come in with biases and also, on occasion, will render decisions in violation of state law, so. One common tactic that's brought about in the court is parental alienation, where an abusive parent will allege that the other parent has brainwashed the kids to hate them. Yet in over 95% of cases, the abuse is shown to be real, but too often, the Sacramento County court system allows the abusive parent to gain custody on the basis of, again, the same experts that then are paid to treat this parental alienation that really wasn't there to start with, so. I live in Elk Grove, and I've got a good friend and loving mother who lost her children to an abuser of this type. He used his experience working for the California Department of Justice to manipulate the courts, and now the children are isolated from their friends and the family, and if they don't profess adoration for him, he takes away their food, takes away their beds. Yes, I know it's a CPS issue, and CPS has been called, but obviously CPS is overworked as well, so. It should be a simple decision to want to advocate for these abused children. And I wish I could tell you that this is the only case, but there are many, many cases out there within Sacramento County, very similar, where kids are put in the hands of abusers by, by the court system, so. So I ask that you work with us in helping protect these abused children. It's not just an issue in Sacramento County, it's present, this is an issue in all of the family law courts throughout the state, and we do feel it's a state issue to try and address this issue and solve this issue. So I ask for your help, because your voice is going to be stronger with the state compared to someone like me or for others of us that are trying to work on this, so. Because we really need to improve the protections that are for these abused children, so. I'm sure you'd agree that, that these children deserve it, and hopefully we can avoid another tragedy such as what happened with Callie Anderson. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. As I mentioned, it's in the purview of the court, so we have no authority there. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I, thank you, ma'am chair. I just would note that I have spoken with Steve, and I know that some of the information that he has forwarded, certainly would have been shared with county council and with county executive's office, and I, although not exactly parallel in the regard that Mr. Barnett addresses this morning, there are others who I know after the summer break are going to be asking, certainly through the exec's office and through the chair, to address this board on similar, but not exactly parallel matters as relates to both the judicial system as it relates to families, but also to, I think, some of the preparation that goes into bringing those matters before the courts, which, again, we do have a role in that. And I think that's where the county connectivity is, is that we are oftentimes called upon through either Child Protective Services, through social workers, through other folks that have expertise in child welfare, and children's courts are the ones that prepare that information. And I know that I continue to hear from folks about their concerns, and there will be folks that will want to address this off-agenda, probably, and I'll certainly keep you posted, Mr. Barnett. I know you've been in touch with my office. When that comes forward, and they're going to ask for at least 15 minutes to, I think, cite some similar concerns that are related, so. Appreciate your advocacy, and I know that you've shared with me some of the details of the other case, and although we may not be able to impact it directly, I think the broader point that you make is one that there are some things that need to be addressed, certainly locally, but statewide, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 74, presentation of resolution honoring D'Angelo Lavelle Humphrey for the unselfish act of life-saving.
Thank you, thank you. Say a few words, if that's okay, sir. So I'm very, very honored to be here today to honor D'Angelo Humphrey, and I'm going to read the entire resolution, because it's that important and, and that impressive. Whereas on June 19th, 2018, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors honors D'Angelo Lavelle Humphrey on his unselfish act in rescuing a swimmer in distress on the American River. And whereas on May 13th, 2018, Mr. Humphrey was fishing with his wife in the area of the Sunrise Boat Launch within the American River Parkway. While fishing, Mr. Humphrey observed a male adult swimming in the American River without a life jacket, which we frown upon, by the way, for a period of time. The subject was observed swimming out toward the Old Fair Oaks Bridge, the boat launch area, and in the middle of the American River. And whereas Mr. Humphrey observed the male subject to be in distress as he was attempting to swim to shore from the middle portion of the American River, the distressed swimmer had submerged and come to the surface three times gasping for air. Mr. Humphrey then unselfishly jumped into the American River in an effort to rescue the swimmer from potential drowning. Whereas Mr. Humphrey got to the distressed swimmer, the subject pulled himself and Mr. Humphrey underwater. Mr. Humphrey managed to get into a position to get himself and the distressed swimmer to the surface of the river. Mr. Humphrey was then able to get himself and the distressed swimmer to shore, where he received medical attention. Due to Mr. Humphrey's swift action, the swimmer survived this near-drowning event. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, the County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby recognize D'Angelo Lavelle Humphrey for his unselfish act of saving the life of a fellow citizen who was in peril. Passed and adopted this day of June 19th, 2018. Thank you, sir.
I would like to thank everybody. I've never been in this position before. I'd like to thank everybody that's here, that came to support me, my loved ones, family, That was just a regular day of fishing for me. And wasn't expecting to have to do anything like that, but my only thought was it was Mother's Day, and I don't think anyone should lose their child on Mother's Day. My wife and I looked at each other at that point, it was, are you going in or am I? I knew I wasn't letting her go, so I went. Before she knew it, I was down the bank and in the water, and it went from there. I got to meet a lot of great people and rangers that day, first aid and everybody. There was a lot of folks that were there that gave me recognition for it. I'm just a regular guy, and just wanted to do something to help somebody else for a change. So I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Truly an unselfish act. Thank you. Would she like to get her picture taken?
Yeah.
Come on.
He's more than a regular guy. He's royal family.
He's all day.
Close. Nice.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Okay, next item, please.
Item 75, invitation to the Board of Supervisors to attend the 2018 California State Fair.
Well, welcome.
Rick Pickering, CEO of Your California State Fair. Honorable Chair Peters, distinguished members of the board, County Executive Gill, and the entire talented staff of the County of Sacramento, thank you for your ongoing dedicated service to the community and your support of Your California State Fair. It's certainly our honor and privilege to be able to present the 2018 California State Fair, which is July 13th through 29th. Of the 58 counties in California, of which Sacramento was one of the very first counties established, of 58 counties, we documented that 56 counties participated in competing in the state fair last summer. And we're going for, trying to get Trinity and Alpines, we can make it a full 58. Life's big adventure this year at the state fair will be showcasing jobs and careers tied to agriculture. That's building upon the wonderful salute we did last year, celebrating the contributions of farmworkers in the state of California. We're also doing a special tribute to how California helped feed the world, so we're excited about that. And in keeping with creating something new, and for the first time, we're creating the first-of-its-kind statewide California youth mariachi competition. Mariachi in California has a long history. In fact, before, many of us enjoyed other types of music, mariachi music was already here. So we were doing a showcase, we've handpicked 10 teams from around the state, all the way down from Imperial up through the Central Valley here in the Sacramento region. They will be coming to town, will be, they'll have an opportunity to practice at Sacramento State, tour the Capitol while they're in town with their families, and then all 10 teams after the competition will have the opportunity to be on stage and do two songs with Mariachi Vargas. Mariachi Vargas is one of the most renowned mariachi organizations in the entire world, highly sought after, so we're excited about that as a first-of-its-kind as well. Last year, we started the very first Out at the State Fair program, supported by local LGBTQ and statewide community. We're also able to help get that into the New Mexico State Fair, which followed on our heels, so we're happy to have that back, which will be our closing Sunday, July 29th. Three exciting weeks of horse racing. We're also creating a new program in order to help put food in the food banks, but it's a free-before-three on the two Mondays of the California State Fair. So if people bring three non-perishable food items to the admission gates between opening and 3 o'clock, they'll be donated to the local food banks, and they'll get into the state fair for free in exchange for food. We think it's a great program. After 10 years of holding our admission rates the same, and you've, you've talked about a number of years here today on different projects, so we've been honored to be able to hold admission rates free, or flat, for the last 10 years. We have a slight increase this year. We believe the public will understand that the cost of doing business, utilities, fuel, labor, et cetera, does take a little bit more to host 800,000 people coming to your house over the 17 days. We have small gift bags for you that include a number of items specific to your state fair. Typically, when I'm here, I'm asked to quickly, very quickly, run through kind of some of the top-tier concerts that we'll have this summer during the state fair. ZZ Top, if you like that end of the extreme, and Kidz Bop's, if you're on the other end of the extreme. Big Country, Trace Atkins, Young Country, Easton Corbin, UB40 will be here on our Out at the Fair day. For R&B, we have Cool in the Gang, Spinners, Confunction. We've mentioned Mariachi Vargas. A little retro with Night Ranger, Los Lonely Boys, War. Berlin with Terry Nun. Sugar Ray will be joining us. And then we have three tribute bands. We have a Beatles tribute band, Queen Nation, and a Happy Together Tour, as well as a Sac Republic game. So things are continuing to come together for Your State Fair. We certainly couldn't do the state fair without the support of the local counties, the counties around us in the region, and those 56 other counties that competed last year. Thank you for your support, all the great things you do, and we look forward to seeing you out at Your State Fair.
Yeah, well, good luck to you. I hope your attendance goes up and the weather stays under 100, so you get a big turnout.
I'm usually asked by elected bodies, what can we do to help? If you could, however you may choose to pray, if you could pray for cool weather?
Yeah.
And if you can. And if you can control the weather, the future's great.
Take it under advisement. Thank you, good luck.
Did you say that ZZ Top was opening for Kidz Pop? Is that what you said? It's the other way around? Okay.
Okay, item 77, or excuse me, item 76, Presentation of Resolution Honoring Jeff Leatherman and thanking him for his service to the Sacramento County.
Hello. At least your last appearance in front of the board, you have multiple appearances here. So Jeff Leatherman, our Director of Regional Parks, and this is his last meeting, and we are definitely going to miss Jeff. He's been here five years?
Six years.
Six years. He lasted that long through some trials and tribulations. The Parkway has undergone quite a change in the last few years, and I wanted to address several things in the resolution. Jeff is a highly effective leader that possesses a management style that fosters trust, commitment, and partnership. Jeff's knowledge, skills, positive outlook have gained the respect of Parks employees, county staff, Parks stakeholders, and Parks users. Under his direction, Parks has successfully initiated several key projects, including the inclusion of Camp Pollock in the American River Parkway, numerous ordinance changes and additions to make regional parks facilities safer as well as cleaner for the public. And then there's a long list of things that have been created. Your Sacramento-area parks, installation of parking pay station, the "Life Looks Good on You" river safety campaign, the opening of the Wilton Community Center, development of the campfire day camp facilities, off-road paved trails cycling pilot program, the Cordova Creek Naturalization and Revitalization of Natural Resources Management Plan, process, creation of the visitor service team, and other things as assigned, I guess. I just want to say for everyone how much we've enjoyed having you here. I think you've really moved our Parks Department into the current century and we will be the better for all your years of toil. And we wish you the best in Georgia of all places. I don't think you could go any further. I don't know if that has anything to do with what's going on here, but I wanted to present you with this resolution and wave it flow.
He's gone for a day and can't figure the camera out now.
That's right. Don't get a day off.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd like to make some comments or not, but I just really want to say we'll miss you.
Thank you so much. And to the Board, I just want to thank you, not only for the last six years, but for the opportunity just to recognize that service. My success here could not have been done without the team, not only of elected officials, but also from the County Exec and my staff, as well as the community members, some of which are behind me from the foundation and Save the American River Association, our Delta Communities, our North County Communities. We have the opportunity as a department to reach out and touch just about every place across the county. And it has been a true honor and a blessing to have been here to serve the community. You know, we don't go easy. It's the relationships that I've made here mean a lot to me, including here with your Board and with the staff and the community. So, thank you. You will always hold a place in my heart here in Sacramento, and I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Serna. We have some comments from the Board here, too. Mr. Serna.
We'll take the picture here in a second. Go ahead.
So Jeff, first of all, I want to say thank you. I think it's pretty obvious that District One has certainly had an eye towards doing what we can to buttress our staff and also our budget when it comes to the Lower American River Parkway. And as was mentioned by our Chair, many of the accomplishments that are well-recognized have to do with the improvement of that stretch of the Parkway. Now, of course, you have a massive inventory, a massive job to not just take care of the American River Parkway, but everything that's in our Parks inventory. But I just want to say, over the last six years working together, I know there have been times where you've seen my temper flare, you've seen my passion for the Parkway in its Ross form. But at the same time, you've always been very willing, able to implement the will of this Board, not just me and the district that I represent and the part of the Parkway that runs through it, but the entire Board. And that is to be commended. It's not something that everyone does well, but you've approached the job with tenacity, a passion, and a great sense of humor that will make you very missed here by everyone. I think your legacy is imprinted on especially the Parkway. And I just want to thank you for your years of public service here. And I want to wish you well in your future in Georgia. And I know that they're going to benefit, just as we have from your very focused attention on what Parks mean to the public. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nattoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bye, Chair. Jeff, I just wanted to add to comments that Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Serna made and just express my deep appreciation for all of your work. You're a true professional. And whether it was the Sherman Island Fishing Access, or Hogback Island, or McFarland Ranch, or Wilton Community Center, Mather Park, certainly areas in the 5th District, and many others, but throughout this county, you came, I think, with experience and expertise that really showed your maturity beyond your years as it relates to, I think, park management and resource allocation, and helped us rebuild. You came at a time when we still were reeling from the recession. Obviously, Parks had taken, along with a lot of other county departments, but Parks had taken some very deep cuts and had left the Department, I think, fairly skimping on resources, but also on staffing. And you've been able to, I think, working with this Board and obviously the communities that we represent, to not only build the Department back, but I think those relationships, as mentioned here, and the deep imprint, one that will be felt for generations to come, I think. And whether it's been the Parkway, or some of the other things that Supervisor Peters mentioned, and many others that you've been a part of, those are places and places for people to have experiences, positive experiences, as individuals and families. And that will, those improvements that were made will be ones, I said, that will be very lasting. And I want to just wish you well, you and Michelle and your children, all the best as you go to Roswell, Georgia. And if things ever get, you get all the things done you need to do there, you're certainly welcoming back to this community.
Thank you.
Because you've done a superb job and really appreciate it. Again, your willingness to take calls anytime of the day or evening, I won't say night, but certainly on weekends. And again, for your leadership and your goodwill. You've built a tremendous program here and again, with the support that you've had, but also you've been the leader in that regard. So congratulations and thank you so much, and Godspeed to you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Frost.
Jeff, I want to thank you for your vision and your wisdom, but especially want to thank you for your ability to manage under circumstances that sometimes were challenging with a lot of challenges on the American River Parkway and opposing forces coming at you, managing all the groups that, whose hearts are in it. And the dreams, you know, we all have for what we all consider to be the jewel of the region. You were the one who was managing all that. And I know that your leadership is effective because I've heard that from other leaders in the region, groups in the region who have worked with you, who are sad to see you go, frankly, and not sure how we're going to replace you. So we know you'll be a hard act to follow, but, and I heard Georgia's beautiful, I've never been there, but I wish you every happiness there.
Thank you.
And your family.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all that you've done.
You bet.
And I refuse to say anything because as I told you before, I'm not accepting your resignation.
Wouldn't expect anything different, sir. Yeah, if I could just also invite the Board down for a photo, I would really appreciate that as I take my steps out. And others.
Diana, come on down, please. And staff.
All the Parks people.
Yes, my Parks people are here.
Hey Jeff, can we present you with something real quick? Since, okay, do the photo. Just real quick, so Jeff, on behalf of the American River Parkway Foundation, we would like to present you with a Parkway Stewart shirt.
Perfect.
So you will never miss the Parkway. Now, we don't want this to be used as a sleep shirt for one of your kids.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. You're precious. Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
Well, how about a round of applause for him?
Good man, clerk. Item 77 is the Resolution Designating an Underground Utility District on Fair Oaks Boulevard from Angelina Avenue to Landis Avenue. The environmental determination is an environmental impact report.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Peters, Board members. My name is Melissa Wright. I'm Senior Civil Engineer for Department of Transportation, the county. The item before you today is for an undergrounding district for the next phase of the Fair Oaks Boulevard Phase III project. The district will be from Angelina Avenue north to Landis Avenue. The request today is to create the Underground Utility District as defined in Sacramento County Code, Paragraph 12.20. This district will be a defined area of the county within which poles, overhead wires, and associated overhead structures are prohibited. We've done this on a couple other previous projects. The previous phase of the Fair Oaks project was done, and also Hazel Avenue. Just to give you a perspective of where we're talking about here on Fair Oaks Boulevard from Stanley Avenue north to Landis. So this underground district will continue to the south where the previous one ended with the previous phase of Fair Oaks. Some of the benefits of the Underground Utility District are improved corridor aesthetics. We have an economy of scale cost savings and minimize construction traffic impacts since we are including the undergrounding with the Fair Oaks Boulevard project. We have the potential of reimbursement of around $860,000. And that's a combined cash payments of, from AT&amp;T and SMO along with the cost of their work to them and the other telephone companies. Another benefit is it prevents the placement of future poles and overhead wires. And we have a lot of public support for this. We've had a lot of commendation from the previous underground districts from the public. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
I have a question, a couple questions. I don't remember, but did we form an Underground Utility District on the other two phases of this improvement area?
On the first phase of Fair Oaks, no, because everything was already undergrounded. On the second phase, which was from Landis to Angle, yes, we created an underground district.
All right. Something I wish were on your bullet points is better coordination with the utilities and in shortening the amount of time it takes them all to get on board with the undergrounding. The, as many compliments as we've had from the Carmichael residents about how nice Phase II looks, there were as many criticisms of the lengthy time it took to get the utilities. I realize we don't control the utilities, but we need to inform them plenty of time and get their timeline and enforce the timeline, I think, so we don't have the road torn up. Hopefully not through the winter again, that was the toughest part.
Yes. So we're working with the utility companies, trying to foresee all design issues way ahead of the gate so that we can minimize any kind of impacts to the public.
Have you had any comments back from the utilities? Or do they recognize the difficulties they're causing, the projects?
I think they recognize. I don't know the level of care they take as we do. So it's, they've been aware, they've been made aware of the problems that it has caused and the delays. And they're aware of the public complaining about the delays, so hopefully the next phase will go smoother.
Okay. All right, so any other questions? I'll move the item, please vote. Oh, I need a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Okay, so our next item is item 78, and this is the Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for Assessor's Parcel Number 2490160072 at the southwest corner of Madison and Kenneth Avenues within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Good morning, I'm Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And County Service Area Number 1, as you know, is the maintenance mechanism for street and safety lights throughout the county. This is a benefit category change for one property. And this, this public hearing is to approve the benefit category change and to authorize an increased service charge. This, for this, we're working with one parcel, as the clerk mentioned, the Oakmont Senior Living Complex on Fair Oaks, in Fair Oaks, near Madison and Kenneth. And the change is from street and safety lights, which is a current rate that they're already in County Service Area Number 1 at, to enhanced street and safety lights, which allows the assessment to be increased with an inflation factor over time, which the current rates don't allow that. With that, the increased service charge for this property will be from $231 per year to $638 per year. So with that, I recommend that your Board direct the clerk to tabulate the return protest ballot, and depending on the result of that ballot, take further action.
Thank you. You are so directed. Do I get a drum roll? I think you'll be faster than the registrar on the most recent vote.
Okay, so this is a protest ballot from the legal owner of Oakmont of Fair Oaks LLC. The site address is 8484 Madison Avenue, Fair Oaks, California. And we do have a yes vote in favor. So, do you want me to go ahead and read?
So with that, I would recommend that your Board adopt today's resolution, but I'll read in some of the blanks to be filled in. In Section 2, it should read that at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protest. And Section 3 should read that at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% were in favor of the change of service charge rate and 0% was in opposition. So with that, I recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Any comments from the Board? Move the item? Please vote. Oops, the screen went off.
Oh, sorry about that. Let's try it again. Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 78 is a Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Levy Change and Levy of an Increased Service Charge for the Assessor's Parcel 2490160072. This is at the southwest corner, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the same one, I apologize. Item 79, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of an Increased Service Charge for the Parcel Number 0740072.
for the Parcel Number 074002058 at the southwest corner of Bradshaw Road and Kiefer Boulevard within Zone 1 of County Service Area 1.
Good morning again. This is the exact same proceeding that just went through, albeit for a different parcel. This parcel, again, this is a category change for one parcel, for an AMPM. This category change is from streetlights only to enhanced street and safety lights. So the actual charge for this parcel would be increasing from $2.56 per year to $504 per year. With that, I recommend that you, that you direct the clerk to tabulate the return protest ballot and then take further action after the results are read in.
You did such a good job of counting votes a moment ago, let's do it again.
Okay, and this ballot is representing the legal owner, California Gold Properties LP, site address 9670 Kiefer Boulevard, Sacramento. And we do have a yes vote in favor.
So with that, I would recommend that you adopt today's resolution with Section 2 reading that the board had received zero written protest, and Section 3 reading that the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor and 0% was in opposition.
Are there any comments on this item?
Move the item. Second?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
To catch up, okay. Item number 80, the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program. This is the public hearing on adoption of a resolution approving the update of the park development impact fee component. The environmental document is an addendum to the final supplemental environmental impact report.
Good afternoon again. Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And this is a public hearing on the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program, but just an update of the park fee component. The North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Financing Plan was approved in 2004, and among its many recommendations was that impact fee program be implemented. That impact fee program was implemented, approved by your board and implemented just a few months later, for several fee components, including the park component, which is a subject of today's hearing. Over the past several years, staff has been working on updating the entire North Vineyard Station Development Impact Fee Program. And actually, in December of last year, we had final capital improvement programs, and we had some initial outreach. Unfortunately, that initial outreach, the feedback we got was that the fees were too high. And they were. So with that, you know, that has caused us to go back and revise some of our approaches. The Department of Transportation has been working hard on updating the roadway mitigation and impact fee and analysis strategy for master plan areas. So with that, that effort is going on. However, there's an imminent need to update the park component of this program. The Vineyard Park, which Lennar developer is going to be constructing as a turnkey park for the Southgate Recreation and Park District, they have just got bids on that park, and the cost for that park is more than what's in the plan. So it would not be possible to enter into an agreement, for Southgate to enter an agreement with Lennar without the plan being updated to reflect the current cost. So that's why we're here before you today with just a park fee update. The, so the proposed park fee is proposed to be updated to, there's actually two components of it. The total fee is $10,255 per dwelling unit equivalent, which for park fees, that's basically a, if you're looking at a single-family home, that's approximately the per-unit fee. Now, that's made up of a fee of $8,487, which is more the traditional park fee, which that funds the basic park improvements, the turf, the irrigation, the hardscape. And then also the facilities such as ball fields, playgrounds, restrooms, some other shade structures, for example. There's also, the other component, the other component which makes up the rest of the 2,000, I mean, the $10,255 fee is for trails, the drainage parkway, detention basin, other things that are not part of the traditional park fee. However, it's just all combined in one park fee. Thing is important to explain it, because when you look at the fee rate, you know, when you compare it to other fees in the region, it's the traditional one that you need to be comparing if you're comparing apples to apples. So with that, so we had that outreach meeting in December, and we got those comments. Since then, we've also worked on, my staff worked with the Southgate Recreation and Park District, and we did do some things, and actually, we brought the fee down by a couple thousand dollars from the fee that was initially outreach in December. And we reduced sports lighting from 99 sportlights to 50. One restroom was reduced, and actually, we found a glitch in the park unit cost, and that actually brought the fee down a little bit. So with that, we are recommending the proposed fee of $10,255. It's increased from the current park fee rate, which is $6,621. And also, I want to add that we've had both the initial outreach and recent outreach on this park fee. We met with a small, the county and the BIA have a small meeting, a small group meeting that they meet on a monthly basis. We presented the fee at that meeting, the BIA didn't ask us to come to the larger BIA meeting for that. We also contacted all the North Vineyard Station developers, engineers, planners, and other representatives that we know of, and we brought them in for an outreach meeting. And at that meeting, we did not receive any opposition to this fee. In addition, last month, we presented this item to the CPAC. So with that, I recommend that you, one, take action on the environmental document, and two, adopt the resolution approving the park fee update, which if approved, the park fee, the increased park fee would be effective in 60 days.
Thank you. Mr. Toney has a question.
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Couple questions. Bob, then as relates to, there are still scattered properties in the plan area that have existing zoning, AR 5, AR 2, maybe a smattering of AR 1, some AR 10. I noticed in the exhibit that was attached that there was a DUE factor that was calculated for ag rez and ag properties. I don't know if there's any ag 20s or 80s still remaining. But my question is then, for those, and some of those maybe folks want to put a new home on or not in the mode of, in the development, seeking to rezone. I know that even during the recession, we had folks actually reverted zoning because of the tax structure that accompanied the, some of the efforts to rezone entitled properties. So the chart that was included on page 3 of the proposed new fee rates goes in for those that are typically your residential, commercial, non-residential uses. But if you could explain for me then, what happens to properties that have retained their zoning, albeit that plan now has been in place for 20-plus years? Are they liable for park fees? And if so, are the rates that are applied in ZBDA, those are what apply? Or, and certainly there are increases, but it doesn't show on this chart, so. Let's hear it calling Susan up.
Yeah, I'm going to break down, Susan Gads, Manager of Special Districts, and I believe she will be able to answer the question.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Morning, Susan.
Hi, Susan Gads, Special, Manager of Special Districts. Currently, the ordinance would collect building permit in ag rez.
It wouldn't?
It would.
It would?
Mm-hmm.
And so are those rates increasing as well?
Yeah.
Then how come they're not in the chart?
The, it's, in a fee program, yeah, this is more for, but in ordinance, we have the chart, if you look at the impact fee table, ZBDA B-1, it has all the.
But that's my question though, it doesn't tell me, it just says what the equivalency is, it doesn't give me the dollar behind that. So I don't know what we're approving for AR. That's my point, Susan, is that this chart here tells me, you break it out for age restricted and non-age restricted, and you have all these categories, and yet this B1 has ag and ag rez categories, and if we're increasing the fee for those folks, many of who have that, have been entitled property for probably 40 years. And I don't know, there are too many new houses being built on ag rez properties, but if we're increasing their rate as well, it should be reflected in the staff report, and it's not. I mean, it is, it's an attachment, but it's, so.
Yeah. We are, with the staff report, we are not amending the fee ordinance. So Chapter 18.1, I think, 82, 16.82, I'm sorry. It's the fee ordinance for the North Vineyard Station Fee Program. In the fee ordinance, those categories are listed. And it refers to the fee rate in place at the time when it, the fee rate itself is not listed in the ordinance, but the category of each zoning category that is applicable to pay the fees within the ordinance.
Okay, so let me, so let me understand this. So what we show on page 3 of the staff report, proposed new fee rates, you have a partial list there, you're saying we're not amending the fee ordinance, if I heard you correctly. So how do the new rates apply if we don't amend the fee ordinance? But that's what we're doing.
The ordinance refers to the fee rate in effect at the time of building permit, so if we're inflating the rate. So your question is, since we are amending the fee rates, it's really we're amending the fee rate per DUE.
Right.
So based on the DUE factor, we can, these listed, the different zoning is the example of, so we did not list the example.
Okay, but it's not a full example, and I guess my problem is here, is that if I were a member of the public or a property owner in North Vineyard Station following this, developers, we meet with them, obviously, we give them that information, we meet with BIA, we cover the bases there, and I'm going to be supportive of this. But as I read this, actually this morning, again, and as Bob was going through the presentation, I'm saying, well, if you're raising everybody's rates, then the staff report ought to say that very clearly and not have to go back to some chart that doesn't even give the rate. And, you know, your explanation helped me follow it, but how would I know if I was going to pull a building permit to build a new house on a two-acre parcel, what my rate was going to be?
Thank you, Superintendent Toney.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is truly just oversight, you know, we really should have put that category in there, so I.
All of them.
Right.
It applies to industrial, office, parks, and then aren't any, I think, that are contemplated out there, but it doesn't say this is a partial list, it says the table shows proposed fee rate.
Superintendent Toney, if I could jump in, Bob, can we amend that staff report by 2:00 PM and show what all the increases are?
Yes.
Why don't you defer it till 2:00?
Okay.
Let us list everything, so it's clear what we're increasing, what we're not increasing.
Okay. Because I just think for transparency's sake, that would, it makes sense, and the, you know, I know you've worked this many months, again, I know that we've got the park under construction, I want to thank certainly Southgate and your offices, working obviously with Lennar and others for, we had people before us last fall, you know, expressing their strong dissatisfaction with how long it had taken to get the park out of the ground. So this is, you know, important to that whole effort, and I appreciate the work that's gone on, but if you could do that, I think it's very important, and then that information is what's available, obviously, it hasn't been disseminated beyond a couple hours, but at least it's there for the record, so, and I, and we as board members know what we're doing to a single-family house on an ag rez parcel.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to continue this to 2:00 PM for further completion of the.
Okay.
List of parcels that are affected.
All right. Thanks.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
Oh, that concludes your morning.
That concludes the morning. Are we ready to have a closed session?
Is there a consent item?
Just a minute. Are we ready to have a closed session immediately following this?
Yes, we are, we have a labor item, we just need to, yeah.
Okay, so they're ready for us. Okay, thank you, and I'll talk to you after we close this meeting. Ms. Klinger?
I wanted a public record.
Yes, okay, so that Item 54 is dropped, and we do not have a date. When it's dropped, it means we don't have a date certain to.
I do have questions.
Karen Klinger, would you like to come to the podium?
Thank you. Is this the first time 54, number 54, was going to be heard? This was a consent item, it was not a timed item, where the public could be made aware that it is a taking, basically, of private property from, all the way on Watt Avenue from Arden Way all the way to Whitney. And I have many questions about this. The ballots are supposed to be mailed out tomorrow. This is something that the public has a right, and those private property owners have a right to be made aware of this well in advance. So if they want litigation, if they want an attorney to be present to go over the information, they have to be made aware of it before the ballots, for God's sakes, are mailed out and a vote.
If I could say, this has been in process for more than a year. All of the property owners have been contacted and have come to meetings or had a discussion on the phone. It does not apply to residential properties on Watt Avenue.
I realize I did read that in this information, but it does affect everybody that lives in Arden Arcade, because this is like a project area. You have boundaries where you're double taxing. Kathy on Fulton Avenue, a friend of mine who passed away, was charged $1,000 for just a little beauty parlor. How many, how many hair colors and cuts did she have to do to make up that additional $1,000? With these people, it will be quite a bit more. With small business owners, they can't compete against you, the county, who also votes against Metro Fire, against the school at Whitney, and, of course, that's Whitney and Eastern. I've got to tell you, this is of great concern, and I believe with a weighted vote, you already have a preconceived win. You have the ability to make this into a win for the county, where there's double taxation. Who benefits? The police department, Metro Fire, the county, but the business owners, the big business owners, yes, they benefit, not the small business owners. So I do have a lot of questions on this, and one of the attachments was not legible, not easy to read with the parcel numbers, it was blown out of proportion, so it wasn't easy to print. How many votes is the county going to poll on this portion from Arden Way all the way to Whitney? And butano subsidized apartments? You've got special builders, contractors who actually profit from this. The old Walmart on El Camino, that's probably going to be turned into transit station for more and more housing. The people have a right in the neighborhood to know what you are doing on Watt Avenue in our community, which you are destroying, by the way. We have become the Rancho Cordova of years past. You are dumping all of the undesirables into our neighborhood, along with businesses that just attract a different type of climate than we want. Restaurants that we feel that we deserve, the top restaurants. And what is the benefit zone? They don't, I don't show where it identifies what the benefit zones are. What categories are they, are there? Has this been advertised? Have you advertised this in your daily, what, daily recorder or whatever that nobody watches, even you don't subscribe to it? You know, what is the process? And is this mailing for the ballot still going to be mailed tomorrow?
It's been dropped from the agenda.
I realize that, so what happens with the process? If you could help me with that?
It will be delayed to some future time that we have not determined.
Okay. And then how does the public, again, we don't even know about it until it comes on the agenda? And please, make it a timed item, so most people, I bet most people don't even read the consent.
This is not, this item is not the final vote on whether there would be a P-bid. This is in order to go collect signatures to see if 50% of the commercial property owners on Watt Avenue wish to partake in this.
When you have a resolution.
So it's not the final action.
Thank you. When you have a resolution for an ordinance that you're going to be signing, isn't that the first step of approval? You, the Board of Supervisors, have approved it, so then you go out for a vote, which again, is an indication that the property owners have not, the small business owners. And I realize you have special interest groups that probably support this and that called in and said they wanted this, like Metro Fire and maybe the Sheriff's Department, because they benefit. This is not about representing the people. This is probably a violation of some type of a, it's a taking, thank you very much. It's double taxation.
Thank you. Meetings and recess to go to closed session. Okay, I'd like to call to order the afternoon session. Okay, I'd like to call to order the afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors for June 19th, 2018.
Supervisors Frost, here.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get into our business, I wanted to acknowledge the Sacramento Association of Realtors Leadership Class, which I'm thinking is over here. If you guys all want to stand up. Okay, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Call your first item.
Okay, so what was held from consent this morning are item number six, approved three-year labor agreements with 11 bargaining units, including the Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff's Association, Environmental Management Specialists of Sacramento County, representing environmental specialist supervisory and non-supervisory units, engineering technicians and technical inspectors, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 39, representing the operations maintenance unit, Law Enforcement Management Association, Sacramento County Alliance of Law Enforcement, representing the law enforcement support and supervisors' units, Sacramento County Administrative Professionals Association, Sacramento County Probation Association, Sacramento County Professional Accountants Association, Union of American Physicians and Dentists, and the United Public Employees of California, Local 792, and compensation changes for unrepresented employees, including general salary adjustment for unrepresented employees in fiscal year 2018-19.
Madam Chair, we have just had one quick comment that Mr. Bonner has to put in the record.
Okay. Mr. Bonner?
Good afternoon, Board. In accordance with state law, the cost of living adjustments for the unrepresented management employees also apply to the county's executive management employees as defined by Government Code 3511.1D. So.
Thank you. Is that all you have?
Yes.
That's all we have.
Next item.
Item number eighty is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development.
We didn't take a vote.
Oh, did you need a motion?
We need a vote.
That's what I asked him. What do you want?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a vote.
Would there be a motion on item six?
Some move.
Second.
Please vote.
Could I get a clarification?
Unanimous vote.
If I could, to the, what Mr. Bonner put on the record. So that means from the county executive all the way, all the administrative staff. It doesn't mean, it's not elected officers. I just want to be clear, it's not board members, the board supervisors.
It's not.
Pay increase, nor the sheriff, nor district attorney, nor the assessor. But every, you're saying everybody in the organization is not represented, including yourself.
Including myself. It does include the sheriff, the DA, and the assessor, because when we set their pay, they get the same as the unrepresented employees.
Okay. But the board supervisors did not just vote themselves a raise. I want to be very clear.
They did not. The board did not get a raise.
Ours is set by ordinance by charter since 1986.
By charter. Once a year, you have that adjustment, but not in this one.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Item eighty was also continued from this morning, the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program, public hearing on adoption of a resolution approving the update of the park development impact fee component. The environmental document is an addendum to the final supplemental environmental impact report.
I think everybody got a chart.
Yes, good afternoon. Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And based on Supervisor Natoli's questions from earlier this morning, we have provided a revised chart. That shows more of the categories that were left out of the report.
Thank you for.
Questions?
Just one follow-on. I spoke to him just before we started, related to accessory units, because on the AgRes potential on Ag, but you can also have them in other zones, you can find accessory units. What is the charge, the primary residents would get charged whatever's in the fee schedule, but if you had a secondary unit?
An accessory dwelling unit under the revised fee rate would be $3,565 per accessory dwelling unit.
And are there any exemptions to that based upon square footage? State law, you know, prescribes that you can have accessory structures, and our zoning code comports with that, versus those that require a use permit, where you actually require entitlements? Some are of ministerial nature now? And so how is that governed?
So if, if, if there is any exemptions, then, then certainly would not be charged. As far as I understand, there is a certain requirements, and I don't have them off the top of my head, but if they're, accessory dwelling unit, then they would pay that. If they don't qualify under, under those requirements, then they would not be charged. So we would just base off that.
Because if I recall, just from our discussions here at this board, on, you know, the zoning code update and accessory dwellings, there's a certain definition. State may have a definition, or they have a more, they have a broad one that allows us to follow that umbrella. Is there other exemptions based upon socioeconomic situations, square footage, or?
So I could review that with planning and report back.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't want to take up the time, but I just, I think it's important to know, and we have other fee districts, and this update, obviously, is important to the park component. But I think that, and even as it pertains to new subdivisions, if they build in that, you know, the accessory unit for other family members or whatever, by law, they'd have that square footage, and it may have a separate restroom and, and maybe kitchen facilities as well, but may only be four, 600 square feet, as to how those charges are calculated, because those are done, obviously, by our, you know, our building permit officials and plan check reviewers. And so I think it's important to know that. I assume that that's all taken care of in the way we do things, but we're updating ordinances, a significant increase, in some cases, 55%, in how we treat that as relates to accessory dwellings, which certainly brings some level of additional human occupation and probably in potential use of the parks, but it's not, you know, there's a different calculation. I guess I'd just be curious to know what that is, so. Okay. Okay, thanks. I'd move the item. Madam Chair, I don't see any other comments.
Please vote.
Item eighty-one is the Squirrel Monkey Haven Project. This is appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a conditional use permit for a property located at 11859 North Valenson Road on the east side of the Colony Road in the Southeast Area Community. The applicants are Christine and Paul Buckmaster. The environmental determination is a negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. You originally heard this appeal item was before the board on May 8th. The item was continued in order to have a meeting between the parties to see if some sort of compromise could be reached. That meeting was held. Staff initially prepared a report about the merits of the project, summarize the meeting, and provide, provided revised conditions for your consideration. However, late yesterday, we did receive correspondence from the applicant, Nick Abdis, on behalf of the Buckmasters, in relationship to the appeal, requesting that the board direct that an EIR be prepared on the project. And so therefore, staff today issued a revised report with revised recommendations, essentially recommending to your board that you do several actions if you are willing to have this, direct that an EIR be prepared. Our recommendation would be that the item would remain with the board. Once the EIR is prepared, we would come back before you with that EIR, and then go through the merits of the project and the merits of the appeal. So those are staff's opening remarks here, and then it would probably be a good idea to hear from both the applicant, who is requesting this EIR be prepared, and then also the appellant. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you. LeAnn, is there any estimate at this point, and perhaps if you can answer, the applicant's representative will, but is there any estimate of how much an environmental impact report is going to cost for, what is it, 55 monkeys?
Yes. Staff has provided the applicant with an estimate. Obviously, the cost of EIRs can vary widely, depending on the project. You know, $100,000 is fairly typical. We have done a lot of work on this project already, so our estimate to go back through the whole process, including EIR preparation and all the work to get back to the board, is in the $50,000 to $60,000 range.
So it could be as much as $2,000 per monkey?
Whatever that works out to, yes.
Do that math.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we estimate around six to seven months to get back in front of the board.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I can just briefly, and we'll hear from folks and may have some other questions or comments, but I just, LeAnn, I want to thank you for your assistance, that of certainly Krista Whitman and others, when both the Buckmasters and their representatives, Mr. Abvis, and certainly the clouches and neighbors and their representative, Mr. Mooney, came together. And as we had left the last time the board heard this back in May, and I appreciate the effort that went into that by all parties, and as you said, it didn't produce any agreements. I think the notes have obviously been shared. I don't think they've been shared in the staff report, and I think reflected, obviously, the comments, concerns, and issues, obviously, some of them relevant to what will be, what will be looked at in the environmental review process. I just wanted to also note, and maybe before we conclude on any decision on this item, that as a part of that conversation and discussion that we had, the Director of Animal Care and Regulation, Mr. Dickinson, participated in that. And we had, in fact, again, I learned a couple of new things about the wild animal permitting process, and I think it's timely irrespective of this pending application, that we look at that process. It's embedded, I believe, in county code, and one that probably has its roots back into the 1960s. I could be wrong about that, but I think that, certainly in light of the discussion we've had around this particular application, and the fact that we only have one other wild animal permit issued in the county currently, there, over the years, Mr. Dixon expressed there may have been a handful, but more, more than just about the animals, the process that's utilized for an annual review, what sort of notice goes around that, because it came relevant, very relevant, to at least some of the discussion we had relative to, you know, how people might participate in that, if there were certain limitations, certain conditions, that there would be an opportunity for folks to review that, but how they would know about that, and, you know, where that information is held. And I think it also goes back to some of the discussion we've had in these chambers about information as relates to this proposal and the, and the monkeys themselves and their medical records and so forth, and who would be the holder of that. And obviously, the Buckmasters offered at the last session to make that available to the animal care director. But I think it would be helpful, Mr. Gill, and certainly it wouldn't be LeAnn's undertaking so much, but I think, and it doesn't necessarily run parallel to this, but it might, but I think it has some relevancy, so maybe something that we want to take a look at, because it was something that we talked about, although I don't, I know people didn't have a lot of confidence as to certain that process. It's a little bit under the radar, and so I think we might be wise to look at, one, how we review applications, who does that, and then what sort of annual review, and what sort of notice goes around that, and any other components that would be relevant to that. And Krista was there, so she heard some of that conversation, so I think that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, you're suggesting we hear from both the applicant and the appellant?
Yes, applicant first in this case, because they're the one asking for the board, for the EIR, and then the appellant.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Nick Abdis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Paul and Christine Buckmaster. I don't think there's much to say other than just a few points. First of all, Supervisor Natoli, I want to thank you for your leadership in at least convening the meeting to attempt to try to resolve the differences with the neighbors in this case. Unfortunately, seems like there's quite a chasm between the applicant and the, and the neighbors. And given the nuances and vulnerabilities of SEQA that we're all well familiar with, we have opted to prepare an EIR in this case, as honestly as crazy as that sounds, for a monkey sanctuary with about 100 pounds of animal biomass. But in any event, here we are. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
I don't think we have any questions. Does anyone else from your side wish to speak? Okay. Mr. Mooney, are you going to speak also?
A couple, a couple of items, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And also, thank Supervisor Natoli for your efforts on the settlement meeting or mediation. It was appreciated, and it was, it was, and it was very informative, and it helped my clients as well. And again, Donald Mooney on behalf of Don and Zena Claunch, the appellant. We obviously support the applicant, the request for a EIR. The one thing I would point out to the board and is, on the appeal, as the amended staff report indicated, there are two issues. There's one, there's their zoning, whether or not it's consistent with the zoning and the land use, and then the SEQA. If the board was so inclined, the board could rule on that issue on the appeal in terms of a denial. I don't think, because there's no environmental document to approve. Or if the board decides to grant an EIR, that is, or prepare an EIR, but if the board was so inclined, the board could just not, grant the appeal on that basis and deny the project and bring this matter to a conclusion. That being said, if the board's not inclined to go that direction, we certainly would support the preparation of an EIR and this process going forward. And I think it's probably a good idea to clarify, for the zoning code to clarify how ant-wild animals are treated and permitted, because, again, we don't believe that the code addresses that currently. The one other issue I would raise is Sacramento County has an extremely high administrative appeal fee. And it's very hard for just, you know, working folks to participate in this process when they have to hire an attorney, but also pay an administrative appeal fee. It's, I believe it's around $4,800 that my clients had to pay in order to have this matter heard and brought before the Board of Supervisors. And in light of the fact that the staff recommendation to prepare an EIR, which was part of our appeal asked for, I would ask the board to consider refunding the administrative appeal fee to my clients. Again, you know, I, I practice before, I go before a lot of counties and cities, and not to be critical of the county, but your administrative appeal fees are on the much higher end than other jurisdictions in the, in Northern California. So if you, if the, if the board is inclined to direct staff to prepare an EIR, that is a basis of our appeal, I would ask the board to take that under consideration. Thank you.
I would defer that to staff to respond to. I think we're reviewing our fees at the moment.
We are.
You got to get real close. Thank you.
I can never seem to make that mic work. We are reviewing our fees. That will be before the board at some future date for review. We do tend to expend a lot of time and money, particularly, including on this appeal. It is a costly process. We have not written a report to the board on a fee waiver request. If the board would like us to do that, we could that, we could do that. But I'm not prepared today to recommend the waiver of the appeal. But if you'd like us to return with that, or we could return with that item, when we return with the whole item.
So I think I'm getting the suggestion that you return with your thoughts on that when the EIR comes in front of it, the whole project comes back.
Yeah, how about if we do that all in one item?
Okay. I, thank you. I do have four people signed up. Does anyone still wish to continue to speak, given that we're deferring action on this item? Okay, please come forward.
Madam Chair, just while Diane's coming forward. LeAnn, it might be helpful to you that, assuming we approve staff recommendation, just, take just a moment before we actually take a motion to explain the process for the environmental preparation. There's a notice of preparation and so forth, and kind of, so people in the audience, I mean, obviously, that maybe there's clear understanding about that, just so people will know, and you can, don't have to do it right now, but obviously, the chair has called for Ms. Moore to speak, but I just think that might be helpful to people.
Could you introduce yourself, so I know which one of the speakers you are?
Yeah, I'm Diane Moore with Moore Biological Consultants, and the Claunches actually asked me to just state a few words today. You know, we submitted, I wrote a letter, or email, yesterday, and Zena Claunch sent one in, and Paula Soni, she had, Sonia Polly had, she wrote one, which we emailed off from my office on Sunday. And I think that the, the common thread in all the recent correspondence is, and something we've been asking for all along, is a request for transparency and disclosure. And, you know, the county operates in a, you know, in a manner of honesty and disclosure. And we feel that this process, you know, is not being sort of paralleled by the applicant, this secrecy around the origin of the monkeys, what's really been done with them, and where they are now, where, you know, where they came from. We don't understand why that's such a mystery, and I think in the information that has been submitted recently, we've given you a bit of information that demonstrates that this is public record, that we all can get our hands on. It'll take a while, but we can get there. And we're just seeking that if, you know, the applicant decides to continue to move forward to this project and actually prepare the IR. to move forward to this project and actually prepare the IR, that the supervisors ask for disclosure of this item. It's, I've just never, I've been through a lot of SEQA for 25 years, and I've never seen a project with sort of mystery approved.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Could I ask, County Council, is it a requirement of the SEQA Act that we would discuss the origin of the monkeys?
No, it's not. That was raised at the meeting, and the applicants had a reason, you know, whether it's valid, I couldn't tell you, but they did have a reason for why they were unable or unwilling to disclose that information, but that's not, my understanding is that is not information that the county would need, and I'm seeing Tim Hawkins nod, that is not information that the county needs in order to prepare the EIR or to bring the project forward, it's something that if the applicant and the appellants want to work out amongst themselves, they can, but we don't need that information in order to do our job here.
Okay, thank you. And then just to make sure, Xena Claunch, Don Claunch, and Sonia Polly, do you not wish to speak? Then, back to the Planning Director, I guess one of the decisions we're being asked to make here is whether we want to make a decision without the EIR, that's attorney, Mr. Mooney asked, is there any desire of the board to do that?
No, I'm prepared to support going forward.
Okay, so, there's no interest in that, Mr. Mooney? Then, I guess we would want to hear from the Planning Director as the next step.
Yes, so Supervisor Natoli asked about the EIR process, so just briefly to respond to that question. Initially, as you indicated, a notice of preparation goes out whereby the public can comment on things that ought to be part of the scope of the environmental impact report, so that has a circulation period of 30 days. Then staff prepares the EIR, so this is done by county staff, not by the applicants, and then there is a circulation period for that draft EIR, where people can comment on the draft EIR, then we respond to comments on the draft EIR, and prepare a final EIR, and then at that point, we would come forward to the Board of Supervisors with the final EIR in hand, as well as then a reanalysis of the project, any revised conditions and mitigation measures, et cetera, and I indicated it would take us about six or seven months to get back to the board, about three months of that is prescribed periods for comment and noticing. So it's hard to speed it up when there is so much of that process in order to be transparent, built into SEQA.
Any additional questions about the preparation of the EIR, Mr. Natoli?
Just to the one point a moment ago, and Krista responded to, but as it relates to the whereabouts of the animals currently, but I think as, I understand that, and that was talked about, but as to the origins, I think it's been talked about that they were researching, and part of the documentation, and certainly the Buckmasters have offered this, and I think the neighbors have requested it, and maybe in more detail than what's been currently made available, but that as a part of wild animal permit, and part of the process that we brought us to this moment today, that knowing, you know, their manifest is relates to being, you know, born and bred in captivity, they're not wild monkeys, but also that are New World versus Old World, however those are defined, but that there is, that information is available, and I think it goes to some of the questions that have been raised relative to type of research that's been offered, obviously in a public manner, but I think that is important, Mr. Hawkins may not need that information, but I think that, you know, that should be, if it's not already borne out in documents and validated, that should be there, because I know that's been part of the essence, at least of one of the arguments that's been put forth relative to, you know, knowing certainly the current colony that's, you know, a part of this application, but if this were to be permitted, other monkeys that might join, I guess to be determined sanctuary, that I think that that's important, and so I guess I would just ask right on the record today that, you know, for whatever information, there may be something that's prescriptive relative proprietary and/or for other safety reasons, that's not disclosed about where they are now or will be in the next five or six or seven months, but they're being proposed to be at a location in Galt, California, and so I think it's important to know, you know, the background, to have that available, and that's been offered, and so I just, I guess I would just put that out there on the record today, I think that's, it's important information to some folks, if not to all the folks in the audience, and others some.
Yeah, and we will look at that, whether it's SEQA mitigation, or whether it's project conditions, and we did write a report with conditions that do address some of that, but we will obviously be relooking at that before we come back before the board.
Any other questions or comments? Sir Natoli, do you want to make the?
Okay, yeah, and with the understanding that Ms. Moffett, when we next have this item before us, would come back with some response to the fee waiver request that's been made here today by Mr. Mooney on behalf of the Claunches, I would move that we grant the appeal as it relates to the preparation of the environmental document, that we direct staff to prepare that document, and then return to this board when it's complete, and will continue to keep it in this venue as it relates to the board's consideration of that matter in the future. So I would move the staff recommendation.
Second, please vote. So it sounds like we would be back?
The motion carries with Supervisor Serna voting no.
In January-ish?
Ish, we don't know the time, so we are not going to announce a date, we'll see how long it takes us to prepare the EIR, we've estimated around six months, so we will schedule it whenever it is ready.
But it would be approximately five, six months, something like that, just to give people an idea of, it's not next week.
Right.
And I don't know if this is required, or if it's something we customarily see, but when we've had fee waiver requests in the past, it's been a written request, and then we run it through the process of determining if there was a staff error, it goes through, I think it goes through Rob Leonard, and then back to make a determination about what to take the board?
If I tell the attorney?
Yeah, I would suggest we follow that normal process, if they want to pursue their request for a fee refund.
Contact the Planning Director, and she'll direct you to the correct, appropriate process.
Right.
All right. Anything else on this item?
We'll see you all back around Christmas time, before or after.
Okay, next item, please.
Thank you all.
Item 82, well, I'm going to read it into the record, we have two minutes, I'll try to read it as slow as possible. Proceed with necessary actions to comply with legal requirements to enact proposed monthly rate increases for the Sacramento County Water Agency.
We have to have a, wait till 2:30 exactly before we can move into this item. Okay. Call the item, please.
I already read it into the record.
Oh, okay, well, then we will begin.
All right, thank you. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. On May 22nd, we presented a proposed two-year rate increase for the Zone 41 water utility. That proposed increase was approximately $3.22 a month for the first year, and $1.99 per month for the second year, for a typical metered customer. Equates to approximately 5.5% revenue increase in each of those two years. The purpose of the proposed rate increase was to address revenue shortfalls we experienced over the past several years, and to get us right, our program back on track in terms of staff vacancies being filled, getting back on top of deferred maintenance, and ensuring that some critical capital improvement projects are carried out. On the 22nd, staff was asked to analyze implementing the proposed rate increases over a four-year period rather than a two-year period, essentially taking that same proposed revenue increase, but spreading that out, stepping it over a four-year period. We were asked to take a look at that and see what that would look like. So, in simplistic terms, that would mean 2.75% increase in revenue each year over four years. The, in the package, Attachment 3 shows, it's got two tables, the table on top shows the comparison between the two-year and the four-year option in terms of estimated annual revenue between fiscal years, 2018, 19, and fiscal year 2021, excuse me, 2021, 22.
Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry, were you planning to put those on the screen?
I can put that on the screen, yes. So what this shows is that by spreading out the implementation of the increases over four years versus two years, at the end of that first, the next four years, we have, in effect, a $2.4 million loss, or it's $2.4 million in revenue that we would not receive if we go through the, go the increases over a four-year period. And what that means is we've just, instead of biting that off in two years, we've spread it out over four years, so clearly until we get to that fourth year, we haven't fully implemented the entire rate increase that has been proposed. The, so what that means is, we would have to make a decision on how to address that unrealized revenue. In May, we presented some of the underlying needs that we have in the program in terms of deferred maintenance, getting staff vacancies filled, and implementing capital projects, and in order to carry out that program that we proposed, we would need to find some way to address this $2.4 million amount of revenue that we wouldn't receive over a four-year rate increase period. The options would simply be continue to defer some maintenance for the next few years until we get to that fourth year, and we've implemented the entirety of the total rate. We take a look at the capital program, and we find some portion of it that we can push out further to delay those costs, or we dig further into our fund balance, which is in effect our reserve, and we utilize more of that in the intervening years, and we carry out the same program that we are proposing.
You could pause for a second, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yes, I could, just on the chart, Michael, make sure I'm following you, because I'm looking at it here, and I'd circle it in my packet, but if I read your chart correctly, maybe you've got something upside down there, or I'm not reading this right, at the end of the five-year cumulative revenue, you're going to end up with almost $623,000 more? At the end of it, we've used a four-year spread out, and then in the last, in the fifth year of the four-year versus the two-year, you're taking annually another $260,000 more?
That's, and I can have our CFAO?
Is that a better deal than me?
Talk about that. What that's, this is, it's showing how they actually taper back to where we're collecting the same amount by the time we've implemented the entire rate. But if you look at the, over those four years, the totality of what we've collected over those four years, we are down, as you can see, $2.4 million.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I was reading, I stand corrected, it was a 140, I was looking at it as 144, it's 141.
It's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, I was looking at that as 144, I was looking in the $100,000 column, okay, I follow you.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Stand corrected.
So, we can choose to utilize more of what we have in fund balance to accommodate that unrealized revenue in order to carry out the program that we're proposing to carry out, or we look to increase the amount that we expect that we'll have to borrow to implement the latter half of the Arden CIP project. So those are options that we can consider when we talk about whether we go with a two-year or a four-year rate increase. As was presented on May 22nd, we've continued to have concerns with deferral of maintenance. We were required to defer maintenance as a result of the severe impact to water demand that was instituted by the state through mandated cutbacks in water use. Likewise, for capital projects, we've got a number of projects, the most critical being the Arden Project, which needs to be implemented fully by 2025, but within the next five years, we've got half of that project that needs to get into the ground. Again, instituting this rate increase over a two-year period will help assure that we've got the revenue coming in that we're planning on in order to carry that project out, it doesn't eliminate the need for future borrowing, that was explained before, there's still another $35 million that we'll have to borrow at some point to fund the back half of that project, but in this next interim few years, that $2.4 million is something that we are counting on. So either we collect it, or we make a decision on how to adjust the program, or we decide to dig further into our reserve.
Michael, could I just ask you, excuse me, in the last year, though, 2021, 22, you're showing $250,000 more annually under the four-year plan versus the two-year plan?
Yeah, and there's some anomalies, and when you crunch these numbers through the rate, call it a black box, but we've got a rate calculator, what they do is they actually do even out, that's, there's a little bit of margin of approximation, I can have Herman talk about that more, but the issue is that in the near term, $2.4 million of revenue has to be addressed in order for us to carry out the work that we're proposing to carry out. We, so, you know, after four years, we'll never be able to go back and get that $2.4 million when we need it, which is in the next few years, it's not 10 years out or 15 years out.
Is it fair to make the assumption, if you had a three-year category in there, that the unrealized revenue, which is shown here as being lost, but it's basically money that stays in the customers' pockets versus coming to meet the needs that we've identified, we've identified, is it fair to say that that's, it's one half of the 2.3?
I'll have Herman come down, he can talk a little bit more about the, he's the number cruncher on the finance side. Herman Williams, our Chief Financial Administrative Officer.
Good afternoon. Actually, the three-year, if we looked at the three-year, when we did the analysis, we did look at every different situation that was presented, we looked at a two-year, a three-year, a four-year, a five-year, we also looked backwards, if we did a two-year on the back end. What Corolo recommended, which is our consultant, they recommended the five-year. We said, okay, what can we do to reduce that, and we looked at our fund balance and said we can use some of our reserve for some of the projects we have outstanding, so we went with the two-year rate increase instead of the five-year that Corolo recommended. The third year, if we went with the third year, it would reduce our costs, our loss would be probably another additional $400,000, so we reduced our losses by 400 grand if we went for the two-year compared to the four-year. The three-year would be, put us about 1.9 million in lost revenue.
And can you tell me what that anomaly is there? Did the, then, whatever your black box is that crunches this, that, you know, shows at least what it spit out was, that you had? at least what it spit out was that you had, you ended up with more revenue annually at the end of 2021-22, but if you divide it, we're going to have basically three-quarters of this calendar year, by the time this rate increase would take effect, assuming it went into place. And I don't know if you calculated then from October 1 of this year through October 1 of 2020, or if you used a fiscal year, but nonetheless, I guess, how is it that, I know there's some compounding there, but how does it get compounded to the point that it's, you know, basically, you only get one quarter benefit by spreading out over an additional year? I mean, one quarter, you know, recovery, that doesn't compute to me, I'm not the, but you're the guy who crunches the numbers, so tell me.
Right, so it's just, it's a component of the model itself. So, we basically, in that third year, you would receive the full 11% increase in that last year.
Versus doing it over four?
Correct.
Right.
So, in the fourth year, we're getting the 11%. If, the way it's set up now, we get the 11% in the second year, and the full 11% in the third and fourth year.
Okay, well, I get that, but it's still only getting, picking up only $400,000.
Any other questions? Thank you.
The concern that was expressed in May, and what we continue to have, is not being able to roll out some of the maintenance that, again, we held off the past five years because of impacts to revenue. We're trying to get this program so that it's sized appropriately, to provide the appropriate level of service, without over-collecting in out-years. That's the other thing, is that there was a, an early look at Corolo's thing, a series of increases over five years, which would really have helped push us through on the CIP project, but then we would be over-collecting in out-years far too much, far more than we would need to. And so, we're trying to hone this in so that we can get our ongoing O&amp;M to a point where it's stable. We know we're going to have to borrow something to finish the Arden CIP project, but then moving ahead, this gets us much closer, if not at, where we need to be right-sized ongoing. We're still going to have things in the future that we can anticipate, but this gets this program to where we're collecting an amount of revenue that allows our maintenance to be pushed out, expanded more, so that we're more proactive, gets those critical staff vacancies filled, keeps our CIP program going. Attachment 4 shows the, we've got quite a bit of capital improvement we're proposing just over the next five years. That's an anomalous CIP. We typically are going to run somewhere around $4 to $6 million on an annual CIP. That we've got this, the Arden project, which is a critical project, and it's fairly unique because of the age of the system. Once we get through that project, then we've got the ability to have a more stabilized CIP on an ongoing basis, so that we can understand, or that we can anticipate what we're going to need to build, and we can have a more stabilized rate. There's still going to be future cost increases, labor increases, material increases over time, but those are just more standard economic adjustments that we'll have to address as needed, you know, just keeping pace with the economy. But what this proposed two-year rate increase does, it gets us to where we can proceed ahead, get those people out in the field doing the work that we need on the system, get the projects going that we deferred up to now, and then looking ahead, once we can get through the Arden project, we can stay on a very, pretty stable basis operationally. The rate, and the scale of the rate increase is, just looking back, it's within the range that we've seen, for our customers have seen, and that doesn't mean, well, you've seen this before, so you should be okay with it. Totally understand rate increases are always something tough to swallow, but over time, each and every program has costs that increase over time, that it's tied to the economy, it's tied to labor costs, it's tied to material costs, and we have a growing system, and we have the system that's aging out, and we've got to try to balance all of those without overburdening the customer base. And looking at the range of options, we still do recommend the two-year rate increase. And that's what we're seeking direction, is to be able to proceed with that proposed two-year rate increase, and start the public process, the Prop 2018 process on that, so we can get that implemented. I think by now, it would be implemented by October. So, we've lost some additional time this year, but we really do want to get that implemented so that we can get the program going back to the level that it needs to be. I'll take any questions, yeah?
I don't see any questions. So, your request is for the two-year-
Correct.
...increase. I have to say, I was iffy on this, and I was out walking my dog a couple of days ago, and came across water bubbling up out of the asphalt, and 3-1-1 the request in, and your team was out there in a day or two, and I stopped and talked to them. They said, they were explaining to me how old the system is, the Arden water system, and that these kind of breaks happen all the time until they get replaced, so I, you know, that's important to save that water and have the reliability in the homes in addition to the water meters, so I'll move approval. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli, you had a question?
Yeah, well, you have a motion, just a comment on the motion, that I represent the majority of the customers in the area that's going to be affected, and, you know, I appreciate unrealized revenue and the needs, and certainly you've done a good job in explaining that, Michael. I still think, though, that when I look at, you know, the overall system and your needs, and I also think about folks that have to pay that bill, and, like I've said many times before, in a number of the areas that I represent, they get a full county bill. They get a garbage water, sewer, and storm drainage, and it's not spread out over other water agencies or other garbage collection services and so forth. And so, when they look at it, they think, and it is, Sacramento County provides those services, and they get value for that service. I, for one, I shared this with Mr. Gill yesterday, that recognizing that may mean, you know, tighten up the belt a bit. We do carry vacancies. I don't know how that gets calculated in here. Obviously, if you get authorized positions, you do your best to fill them, and there's some turnover, there's some capture there annually, and I would much prefer to see us go for a three-year if we're going to do this. That's about a buck sixty and some change annually. And again, I, without seeing the numbers, I trust what you say, that maybe it's only, you know, it's only $400,000 in net to the unrealized income that the district would have, but in my view, and so I don't intend to support the, going out the notice with the two years, it's just big enough bites, and we've got other pending increases at other agencies, and, you know, I want good service, and I want the situation Mrs. Peters spoke to, I want those to be, you know, attended to, and we do, and we do our best. But there's no question, you've already said, we're going to be back in here talking about the Arden system and the $75 million, and we're going to buy some of that down with reserves and some of the dis-fee increase, and we got older parts of the system. I guess lastly, too, it was a little bit surprising, your last chart, it's real, but we've had a budget for many years, and that's the Hood Water Treatment Facility. And so, I guess I would say to you that you should have broke some of that money off in budgets in past years, there may be some cost increases and so forth, but that's, I don't, that's not some new addition that all of a sudden popped up. You know, your staff and you have worked on that for better part of a decade now, and to kind of show it in the chart, it's real, it's money's going to be expended in this calendar year or next. Hopefully, this calendar year, we're going to get it done, or fiscal year. But, and it may take away from your ability to have a little more flexibility, spend money, and hope the next year that you'll get the next project funded, but, so I'm prepared to support going out, 2018 notice with three years, but not with two.
Supervisor Frost had a question? Then you.
Did you move approval?
There's a motion in a second.
Okay. I'm going to support staff's recommendation to, and I think, no, I mean, we don't want to charge people more. It's an ongoing problem. We have an aging infrastructure, and at the same time, we're telling people, don't use as much water, so our budgets are strained from all different sides. And I have sympathy for your dilemma of trying to work within those circumstances, and it's not a lot, but I'm sensitive to raising rates, too. But if we're going to raise them, and it's not a whole lot, let's do it so that you have what you need to work with to get, what you need to get done, done. And so, I'm going to support the two-year.
Thank you, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I just had a question about Mr. Natoli's position. Is it that you're not necessarily opposing the rate increase, you just want to extend it over an additional year? Now, is that a statement of a substitute motion, or is it?
I would offer it, if there would be a second, or I don't-
I'll second it, but that's a substitute motion.
Okay. The motion is for a, the substitute motion is for a three-year rate increase versus the motion for a two-year rate increase. Please vote on the three-year increase.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Frost voting against.
You can come stick your finger in the holes in my asphalt.
Thank you.
And I do want to note that Karen Klinger was here earlier. She registered opposition to this as it's another tax.
Item 83 is a recommendation to remove member from the Adult and Aging Commission for failure of participation pursuant to the bylaws of the commission.
Any discussion on this?
Move approval.
I have a motion, is her second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 84 are your nominations. You are continuing to July 24th the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and for your matters today, you have the Civil Service Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, nominate Ron Suter.
Okay. And then we have the County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Continue to July 17th, is what I have, too.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to July 17.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor-
For District 3, continue to July 24th.
Supervisor Frost.
I was told I did not-
July 24th.
July 24th?
Yeah.
Do you know that?
That's what's on my notes.
Okay.
Continue to July 24th.
Sorry, I was misinformed, I was uninformed, but-
It's okay. Thank you.
It's noted for the record, to continue to July 24th. Rio Linda Elverta Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
I'd like to nominate Hal Morrison, waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then we have the Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
Please recommend reappointing Keith DeVore and James Deaton Brock.
And then we have Sacramento Countywide Oversight Board.
Chief recommend nominating Amar Hari Haran. Harry Heron. Harry Haran. I'll get it right. It's got to be one of those three, right? Sorry. I've got it phonetically here, but it could still be pronounced different ways, so my apologies, sir.
I have it in my notes to waive the process on this one.
I have a motion to waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And now we have the Veterans Advisory Committee, Supervisor Frost. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Peters.
Continue to July 17th.
And Supervisor Natoli.
Likewise, I've done five of the six interviews, I have one more interview, and I'll be prepared July 17th.
Okay. That concludes your nominations.
County Executive, do you have any comments?
Just one comment. We're going to be on recess for board meetings until July 17th, so see everybody back on July 17th.
Have fun. Any board member comments? Ms. Frost?
Thank you, Chair Peters. I'd like to request to close our meeting in memory of a good friend in, from Rio Linda, George Harsh III. George passed away at home on June 1, 2018, at the age of 84. He loved to hike, fish, hunt, snow ski, water ski, and taught those activities to dozens over the years. George's father was stationed at Pearl Harbor, but after the bombing, the family was evacuated to San Francisco and settled in nearby El Cerrito, where George played football at the El Cerrito High School. He was an Eagle Scout, and from 1951 to 54, he employed his scouting skills as an Arctic and Wilderness Survival Instructor in the U.S. Air Force. George graduated from the University of California, Berkeley, in 1960 with a degree in Business Management, and later worked in California's rice industry, managing several mills. In 1959, he built the family's first mountain cabin in Truckee, California, near the Alpine Meadows ski area, where he became a charter member of the ski patrol, an endeavor he pursued for over 20 years. George also had a remarkable talent for training dogs for hunting and obedience. He was fond of his German wire-haired pointers. In 1975, George and his family joined the Sacramento Water Ski Club and began decades of competition water skiing. He was an active and regional, in the regional and national championship competitions, and also driver, judge, and regional councilman. He skied into his 80s. In 1977, George designed Berkeley Aquatic Park's steel water jump, ski jump ramp. He filed blueprints with the USA Water Ski for ramp, for the ramp that was still in use and widely presumed to be the country's most, first steel jump ramp. In 1980, George became involved in the Bell Aqua Water Ski community in Rio Linda. He helped Bell Aqua host the National Water Ski Championships, and over the years, he helped to make Bell Aqua one of the nation's premier tournament water ski facilities. As a nature enthusiast, he dedicated himself to cultivating dozens of trees, which he initially grew in buckets and then transplanted to form a virtual forest that enhanced the area's ecology and acted as the lake's first wind barrier. George is survived by his devoted companion, Eleanor Anklin, his two sons, George IV, Fritz, and Hans, and their mother Barbara, and his sister, Joy Ricker. He will be sorely missed. A memorial will be held on June 24th from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the Sacramento Association of Realtors Building 2003, Howe Avenue, Sacramento. And I just want to say that George was a wonderful man. He took me out to that, there's a private lake in Rio Linda, you wouldn't ever know that this place existed unless you went there. It's several homes that are built around two private water ski lakes, and they do competitions and jumps, and he gave me the grand tour, and he was a wonderful, wonderful man, and we will all miss him, and God bless George, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you. I also have a German, if you'd like to remove the photo. There we go. Thank you. I'd like the board to adjourn in memory of Barbara Harrison today. When I joined the board in 2005, the Neighborhood Association for Old Foothill Farms area where I grew up was being rejuvenated thanks to a small, dedicated group of residents, among them Barbara Harrison. She was a founding member of the Old Foothill Farms Community Task Force and stayed active in its leadership until her passing last week, last month. Barbara handled their communications, as well as her membership, and was always involved in special projects like the rededication of Walurga Parks, Japanese Memorial, the Movies in the Park, and the annual community yard sale. She had a long 21-year career with the Sheriff's Department, providing administrative support for the burglary and child abuse boroughs, the jail, and the North Division Patrol. Mostly, my interaction with her, she was a very strong advocate for building the missing sound wall gap along the I-80 freeway, and she was very excited when, learning that Sacramento County would be funding that project. I'm just really sorry that she will not live to see the construction of the sound wall. Her community involvement and dedication to the Old Foothill Farms community will be dearly missed, and I'd like the board to adjourn today in the memory of Barbara Harrison. So, we will adjourn today in memory of George Harsh III and Barbara Harrison, and see you in July.